Hey, everybody. Happy Monday to you all. Thanks for joining us. Has everyone eaten pie today and yesterday? Today's the leftovers, right? Alyssa, you should do a pie thing for Pie Day like you do for your hot chocolate.
Yes, great idea.
You could hit up all these different pie places.
Right, reviews, monetize.
There you go, right? And then you can survey or review like diabetes doctors.
Educational at the same time.
Right? I think that would be a fun way to go. Those are awesome, though. We love to watch those. Those are great, and they're very informative. We totally watch them, and we would totally follow you to some of those places.
Oh, awesome.
If you didn't like it, we wouldn't go. It was youth power. You don't realize.
Thank you. Yes, I am an influencer. Yeah, in its true definition.
That's right.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, welcome, everyone. We're gonna get started here and gonna introduce to you Dr. Adam Johnson, of course. We're thrilled. This is our second session with Adam during this project of our score studies. And having a world-class professional orchestra conductor look at our band music and tell us what he sees and how they would approach it. And the first session, of course, was on Samuel Hazel's Ride, and it was fantastic. And today, we are focusing on David Holzinger's On a Hymn Song of Philip Bliss, which is another standard piece of repertoire for junior high and even high school. A beautiful piece of music. And so I'd like to welcome and thank Adam for joining us all the way from Montreal, where he's busily preparing. He was just telling me before this, he's preparing for a concert with the Montreal Symphony in just a few weeks. So hopefully, if it's streaming, we can all tune in and be your fans on there. That would be pretty fun.
Thanks. Yeah, it's exciting to have some concerts happening again. So, good evening, everyone, and it's a pleasure to be here with you and a pleasure to explore some really beautiful music. When I first was looking at this hymn song of Philip Bliss, I read the little preamble. And there's kind of double tragedy that seems to have led to this composition that the person who wrote the hymn, having lost four daughters, and then also the, well, the poems rather, the poem, having lost his four daughters, and then the person who said it to music, having died in a train wreck. And then this kind of being attributed to them. Now, I don't think that that tragedy is so much in the music because it is a song of hope. But still, it's something that can be good for students to know. And certainly, whenever I'm studying a piece of music, I definitely go into the history of it because it can inform what we're doing with the performance. So I've got a camera here. Going to share this. Alright, so can you see that? Can you see the score alright? Yeah, there we go. Alright. Again, it's a little darker than I intended, but we can work with that, I think. Alright, so now, when I'm diving into a piece of music, I tend to look at the structure of things first. I won't go through like an individual structural analysis. I'll kind of talk about each bit as we go. But I do, just as a thing, I do tend to mark my four-bar phrases with a line. The reason I do that is so that I don't have to look down at the score much when I'm conducting. I can look and quickly see a four-bar section, and I know where I am within it. And my eyes can be out, and then I try to have my eyes out of the score as much as I possibly can. But then by having these lines marked, I can quickly see the sections. And when I just glance down to check something, I kind of can find where I am quickly. So I'm sure you all have your various tricks and whatever for things like that, but that's just a way that I do it. Now, when, in this introduction section, here we've got this little eight bars, I then was looking for, well, what are our pairings? Because I'm gonna need to know who I've got to be tuning, right? With our unison instruments. And so another way I've marked this here is just I've marked, well, we've got the alto sax. We've got our first clarinet, and I just kind of did a little line there. And then we've got these three instruments here, the second and third clarinet, well, three groups, and the second alto sax. And now with these people, what we're going to be trying to build is a very seamless type of fabric where one group of instruments plays and passes it beautifully into the next group of instruments. So this is a really wonderful exercise for getting, for people to listen to each other and to hear the level that each group is finishing off with and that the next group can continue on with. Because we've got kind of a long crescendo going towards our fourth bar here. And so when we do, let me just see, what is this? Clarinet and B flat. Okay, so. That we want this to sound as much as possible like, like, you know, it being passed from one group to the next. Now, one thing is, this is another great opportunity to teach some advanced music making. I find slow music is actually far trickier musically, right? Than fast music where it just tears along. Here, we really, I mean, intonation is always much trickier. But also for phrasing, the sustaining and things. This is an awesome piece for teaching to phrase across bar lines. Right? That it's already kind of marked in here for us, but we really want to feel this. To be leading us across bar lines. And that the first clarinets and the alto saxophones are kind of driving the music forward into the next bar. So we've got this beautiful. Right, and then. And then I'm just reading here. And then when we get down to, we have to continue the crescendo all the way to this downbeat of our fourth bar. Okay? So one thing that often happens with students, and it can happen at the professional level too, is that you see the start of a dynamic change, like a decrescendo in this case, and people start to anticipate it before you arrive at the downbeat, right? Whereas it's just telling us from here, we're gonna start going down. But really, we want to make sure that we've continued the crescendo into this downbeat because there's this really beautiful dissonance here with the B flat and the A flat. So for that, a paletura here to really take effect, well, we want to make sure that we haven't started the diminuendo too soon because it'll kind of take away some of the musical tension there. And I would also suggest that if you really want to take the musicianship to another level to still be really expressive on this first quarter note, you could even put a tenuto mark over it. Something like this so that it sings, so that we really have. Okay, because what happens when there's a decrescendo is right away. People start coming away, but we lose an expressive opportunity there. If it just right away starts to fade, it still can sing that first note and then start to come away. And now, one of the things that is, there's an opportunity here to relax the tempo a little bit as it comes down. And I listened to two recordings of this today. And both of them take a fair amount of time coming down, which, you know, is like a, you know, a musical thing to do to feel the relaxation. I wouldn't exaggerate it too much, though. It's just an opportunity to relax, but not a writ, right? The composer didn't write an outright writ there. It is a structural point. But so just to relax a little bit on the third and fourth beat. And what's a nice chance here for our percussionist is to learn how to just listen and be able to place this little ding of the triangle with a fourth beat that's gonna be slightly relaxed. It's gonna be just slightly later than where it would normally arrive. So if the triangle player is counting along, well, he's gonna have to listen to and place right with where would that, where would the right moment be in order to place with the rest of the ensemble? So then, of course, as the conductor, going through this, this is something where I think the way I would conduct this is a lot of horizontal motion in order to encourage movement in the air and movement in the phrasing and to encourage some, now, it's legato as well, of course, but to encourage some forward motion. If we're going to relax a little bit at the end of these four bars, well, it would be good to move it forward a little bit as well in order to arrive at this point. So I would think of it as kind of a, like a. And then show them to move across the bar line. And then across the bar line, encourage the motion. Across the bar line, you get your crescendo, and then let the last bar come down a little bit and eye contact with the triangle player so that he's listening or he or she is listening, right? And this is just something where it can help them to feel more secure, but with just a little bit of eye contact while everybody is feeling the slowing down together. And so by just giving a little bit of direction, a little bit of movement forward, a cello roundo is too strong of a term, but I think just with the music rising and with the crescendo rising, it's normal to let it move forward ever so slightly and then to let it relax a bit. And then, as we get into the fifth bar, we're joined by the tenor sax, and the triangle will be playing now on every fourth beat. Another opportunity to move forward a little bit, and I would crescendo slightly more this time than I did the first time. To create, yes, we've got a four-bar structure and another four-bar structure, but in more advanced music making, we always try to make the largest structure possible. So to join four plus four into a big kind of eight-bar thing, meaning don't relax too much here so we still have some momentum going, and then crescendo a little bit more here. And you could relax a little bit more at the end of the eight bars. But if you relax a ton here at the end of bar four, then it becomes very stuck, kind of four bars by four bars in a more pedantic way. And so I would encourage you to think of this in terms of really eight bars and to build more towards the eighth. And then we have this beautiful little horn line that's gonna come in and join and at least start the next section and really get one of our main themes going. Now, this is something that we see all the time in, well, in most music, honestly, but especially I find in band music, is the blanket dynamics. Okay, this is something I'm always referring to. Everybody has metso piano, metso piano, everybody's got metso piano. And then we also have solo first horn. Well, generally, if a composer writes solo first horn, it's probably meant to be a special feature, is meant to come out a little bit. But there's nothing in the dynamics that really helps us out here. And so I would, if I was conducting this, I would ask them to play at least up to a metso forte. Start metso piano and kind of come into it, but then crescendo through this A flat. Okay, so that it can really sing through and end up above the texture of the rest of the group. Now, the others that have these half notes, I would tend to mark this down into a more of a piano range a little bit. Just let them know you're just accompanying here while you're holding. This technically is a melody as well, but I would say a secondary one. And just something I always say, big fish eat little fish. That these longer, bigger notes, while those are being sustained, it could make it harder to hear what's going on in the eighth notes and make it harder for our horn to really be able to sing above. Okay, so this is something that I would just make sure that accompaniment is accompaniment or these secondary lines are secondary, and we can really hear the horn. Now, we don't want to ask them to play so quietly that like their sound quality would be affected or that it doesn't sing, but it's still, when it's just one dynamic through, it does not mean that all instruments play equally. And of course, I know all of our ensembles have different numbers of instruments and whatever. So, but say in an ideal world where it was a balanced instrumentation, a blanket dynamic is just a character rather than a decibel level. And so we want to make sure that each of the layers, we make a decision as to what we want to have come through. And then bring your students' attention to those different layers as well so that they can hear and adjust, you know, according to which layer they fit in. Now, something that I would do for this beautiful horn solo. So, like I said, I would kind of put a crescendo to get us across the bar line, and it makes for a nice lead in. And then the melody kind of goes down. But I wouldn't let the line drop too soon as the melody goes down to really encourage the player to sing and sustain and to project across these quarter notes that go down. Now, when we get to the next bar, here, I think it could fade away a little bit because it's kind of our first gesture. It's natural here to breathe, right? And then we can start the next bit of our phrase. Right? And so here, I would encourage them to really put shape, put a kind of a curve into this so that we've got, what note is that? That's a, me, so. I would really think crescendo through this. And that, giving that direction, helps us to get over the top of this melody, over the top of that little third, or that third jump that goes up to the B flats. So we have. And it becomes a very organic and singing beautiful melody this way versus thinking of it, you know, we want to move away from note by note, which is where we have to start when we're learning it. But then to encourage them to get into the shape and into the curve. There is nothing in the music that indicates any, we've just got metso piano and then a series of notes. But so we have to, as the conductor, as the interpreter, kind of go, if we were to sing this, how would it be natural? How would it be beautiful? And I would encourage you to get the students to sing it so that they can, you know, learn the natural expression of the line and then to try to imitate that when they're playing on their instrument, to get the singing tone, but then also to get really the phrasing. So I would encourage a crescendo through here. And they can resolve across the bar line here. There's a natural, we've got the harmonic progression here. We have just a four-five-one cadence, so there's a natural resolution point here. Now, in the other lines, in the secondary lines, where, who's, if, these are E flats. By the way, I'm sure you're all very familiar with how to read quickly the, you know, the different, the different transpositions. One thing, a trick I typically use when it's an E-flat instrument is I just read it in bass clef. But then you have to do the key signature as well. But anyway, it's a little shortcut that's pretty handy whenever an instrument's in E flat. So. Ah, yeah, we should talk about, actually, I was about to talk about the phrasing of this, and I realized I missed the opportunity back here at the beginning. Since this material will come back lots of times, it's worth it to spend lots of time here, and then we won't have to do it at the end. But one thing with this, the phrasing of these eights. Now, there's a couple of ways you could think about this. The composer has written a long, steady crescendo that goes to our fourth, okay, bar, as we said. Now, you could take this very literally and see this as a continuous build that happens across every eighth-note subdivision of the bars as it goes. So you'd have. So what that kind of does is it makes for a, like, just a steady build. But it also flattens it out in a way in that we can't feel when we go from fa, mi, fa. What's the difference of tension in a mi versus the fa? If we've set this up as we're in D-flat major, okay, so this is our third. The E-flat, the second degree, is naturally has more tension than the third does, right? So to me, there's something that's naturally, there's a bit of that tension there, it's a bit expressive. And I wouldn't want to flatten that out too much. I would want to, personally, I would want to feel that. So that means to me that the E-flat and the G-flat are a little bit more expressive than the F. But then I can still do what the composer is asking in building each one, but each one of these successive motifs builds then. So you can be expressive within each one and still have the crescendo. And I think that's a more interesting and more beautiful option than just taking literally, you know, like a slight decibel increase through each eighth note as the bar goes on. But, I mean, you both would be fine. It's just whatever you think works. And depending on the level of the players as well and how much expression they're able to feel or put in. But this is, I think, a moment for, there's some opportunities there for beautiful music making. And that goes for the other, the answer line as well in the other, in the first clarinet and the alto sax. There's more tension on the A-flat than there is on the B-flat. Right? So I think those can, yeah, feel it anyway. It's, there's always in music, we've got the microstructure and the macrostructure. So the macrostructure is what's our long line? What's the phrase? Where is it going? And how do each of those successive phrases join together into a section of a piece? So we, as I said earlier, generally, the more advanced the music making, the more we have a sense of the macrostructure. We have a sense of how all these phrases are gonna fit together, like a bird's eye view of the piece. But you also want to have the microstructure, which is the relationships between the notes. How do they, how do we have relative tension in there? Where does it sing more? Where does it resolve? And these sorts of things. And so to not let one completely obliterate the other, right? And forget the microstructure in order to just have the long line. But also, we don't want to get stuck smelling the flowers on every little note and forget that we also have to phrase across four bars, right? So ultimately, if you can arrive at being able to do both, well, then that's really some very fine music making, right? And that's something as an adjudicator, I would be, you know, looking for and seeing, well, which one did they favor? Or did they manage to do both? And if they left one of them out, well, it suggests that they, you know, keep what they can do and see if you can add in the extra expressive element or the added structural element in it. So then when we get into, back to where I'd left off here in measure nine, to just keep singing through these. Now, in this nice line here, when we have this long scale going down, again, there's nothing marked in the music in terms of changing expression at all. But what I would do is, so. When we have this long scale going down. I would suggest almost like a crescendo towards the second beat of this, okay? I don't literally mark it as a crescendo because it's a bit of a crude way to think of it. I think of it as a curve where we feel the, as we're going around the corner of this line, we kind of feel like in a car when you're going around a corner, you feel the forces push the line around the second beat. And generally, that would be here. But if you wanted to mark it with crescendo and decrescendo, it would be a little bit like this so that we would have, we'd have. And just again, another way to just put a little bit of expression, a little bit of natural shape, that if we were to sing, we wouldn't do each note successively and in a rigid way. But the problem with putting a crescendo in there is that it can become a bit exaggerated. So it's just more of an expressive thing rather than, you know, the composer didn't write crescendo, decrescendo, and he could have. But it's just a matter of how to feel this long descending line so that it has a nice shape to it. All well-being underneath the horn, which is a tricky thing because you've got a whole clarinet section and plus the saxes, and you've just got this single horn here. Then also in the bass line, I mentioned earlier that we've got a five-one cadence here. So we've got our A-flat, which is resolving onto the D-flat. Well, I think with this bass line, so we got. We want to naturally feel five-one, okay, to let that resolve a little bit. And so I would definitely be asking players to, you know, who have this thing, to make sure that we do a little bit of relaxing here, a little bit of diminuendo going down in order to feel the harmonic resolution there, okay? And then the music from here is going to take off again. And we add our flutes in, of course, where they now have a beautiful opportunity to sing. What was there? I think it was fa. Let me just check, or F? Sorry, I'm so used to working in French now. When I'm saying fa, is it okay? Instead of F, whatever, okay. It's also easier to sing than singing just a letter name. But still, with students, it can be super useful to sing the note names just to help drill in the actual awareness of what the notes are. And so then they've got that, and then it's a separate thing from figuring out what the fingerings are. But if you can get the musical line in there and know what's the target, what are we aiming for? Well, then everything else is to go towards that point. You sort of set where's the endpoint there, which is always imitating the human voice, anyway. And I know getting teens to sing can probably be a challenge at the beginning if they're not used to it. But anyway, it's something that can be worked on and become very natural. So. Okay, so when the flutes have this, let me get it to here where they, oh, no, it's not coming through very clearly here. This says sing. Okay, now, something I would, it's so weird that it's coming through blurry. Okay, it's the camera that's blurring the edge. There, now I think you can see it, except for I've messed it up now with the thing. But so what I've put in here is I would encourage growth across this half note. And to not just go and. And to not just go and to really sustain across the bar. And that means to think of this as a crescendo. Now, I've marked a little tenuto over this sol because if we are in, where are we going to be resolving onto here? We have a six-four, interesting. Just looking at the harmony. We've got a D chord, but it's, it's over an A flat in the bass. But this, in, we're heading towards an A flat chord. We've got B flat going to A flat. This is kind of a leading tone, more tension versus the A flat here. Also, when we've got a long crescendo starting, I always look for an opportunity. Whenever I see a crescendo starting, look for an opportunity to start less. Find a way to start quieter because it will allow more room for the crescendo to grow. This is another place where we tend to anticipate. We see the start of a crescendo, so we start louder. But it, it means that there isn't as much room for the crescendo. And yeah, so, you know, a little bit of expressive opportunity lost there. So I would, I would feel this, this tension here and encourage them to resolve a little bit. And then from that resolution places, then they've got lots of room to be able to do the crescendo. Now, this is a very beautiful little thing here, the, that the clarinets have. They were beef, they were in B flat, if I remember right, yeah. So I would, again, with the curve here, I, I would encourage a shape in these three notes going across. And I put the line here to say towards the second, towards the middle. You can think of it as a tenuto also perhaps, but just more expressive to sing towards the middle of the three groups. Okay. So whenever there's successive notes, I'm always looking for, how do I shape them? Because it's, it's never like a MIDI file where a right? It's always going to be going somewhere, crescendo, diminuendo, whatever. But within that growth, there's, there's kind of, I just like to think of it naturally as a, as a curve. Oh, I guess it's faster. This would be, I'm not doing the rhythm right, sorry, but so it'd be and then and then another little thing I've marked in here for the alto sax is they've had this melody going along and they will also have the leading tone along with the flutes. And so I would just encourage them to crescendo a little bit down into this leading tone and to resolve away again so that we have this nice harmonic resolution here. Which is going to be, well, sort of a resolution that is going to be heading towards this buildup here. Now, normally, I, I've been talking about when we have a dominant and tonic relationship of five-one, A flat going into D flat, you would have a resolution, except in this case, we're really going into a new section where the composer is asking for the music to build and to arrive at a new dynamic level. So this is a place where I would really just continue the crescendo through and arrive in the new dynamic place. Now, the horns and trombones are starting a new melody here. So I would encourage a big breath in here and a lot of crescendo expression across our bar line to really make sure that this is an upbeat that leads us into what's happening next. And to not get stuck on this downbeat, but to rather keep singing through. So this is when we have a repeated note here, hey, keep going through the half note of see, get all the way across the bar line and then we can resolve a bit on the third quarter and then reshape from the fourth beat. And then we've got another opportunity to breathe. There's a resolution here again. And there's a crescendo, well, I typically look, as I said, for an opportunity to start a little bit less. So I've got more room to do the crescendo from there. Not in a systematic predictable way, but just saying, okay, if there's a crescendo, how can we make sure that I've got room to do the growth there? But it just so happens, we've got this beautiful A flat to D flat cadence. It's very obvious here, five-one. And so it's nice to, to resolve as we get to the end of this section. Okay, but this, so just another opportunity here for another section to learn some, some excellent shaping, phrasing. Keep going across the bar lines and sustain the line as, as long as possible. And in the score, when there was nothing marked here, it was just a half note and then two quarter notes, all in a row. But that's not how we would sing. It doesn't tell us how to sing it. And I find it's a shame that in these scores, there isn't a little bit more, there aren't more indications to teach the musicianship. So I would add them in. And just to, to show like we can have the tension here, resolve, and then this fourth beat is actually leading us across the bar line there. So we have, I'll sing it once more. And then you see, do you feel how that really joins the line and it makes it expressive? Versus right, that just and that's what's written. You wouldn't be doing anything wrong according to what's written on the score. But music is, printed music is awful in terms of telling us what the actual music is about. Like, it, it's just not there. It's like, if you, if you have a movie script and you give it to an actor, you're giving them words, right? That they're going to read. But then if they just like stood there and read the words with none of the meaning or emotion behind it, well, they wouldn't be acting. They would just be reading the words, right? And it's a bit the same, we're given notes, but the notes don't, aren't the music. They're, they're just the sounds. They're, they tell us when and what to play, but the, none of the actual music, the, the expression is, is really in it. So this is what we, we spend a lot of time on in interpretation. Say at the, at the top levels with great orchestras, like they can sight read anything. And if they, if anyone does make a mistake in the first run through, by the time you've gone through it a second time, it's all there. They know how to play together. In most cases, they've done the pieces hundreds of times or they've got traditions dating back decades or more. So, you know, they can play the music, but why we still rehearse, have five rehearsals sometimes before concerts when it's a big main series thing. And it's this sort of thing of like, well, how do we, you know, what does it mean, the notes, right? And so, and what are the colors? What are the textures? How do you balance things? Because all of that isn't there in the notes, right? And so that's really where the, the work happens in making sure that each level of the textures in here, like. So now, this will be an easier section in a way for balance because we've got so many unison things. But you're going to have to go through and make sure that the intonation between each of these groups is okay and that they all agree on where these notes fit. I think, I said this last time with the, with the ride session. I've, in adjudicating, and I'm sure you've all noticed this as well, but in adjudicating festivals and hearing tons of bands, it can be really impressive, the level in a fast piece, and then they've got their, their token slow piece. And then you see, oops, the, you know, a lot of work to do on, on tone and on intonation and on listening and, and on phrasing. So these are really important things to be working on. Now, if, okay, we've got this next section here. Is that, I don't have the comments up or anything, but do, does that give you a pretty good sense of the first part of the piece? Move on to the next bit here, that we've got this, this is the first time we're arriving up at a forte with this accent here. I would make this pretty, pretty dramatic to really, you know, arrive there. But it doesn't mean that we haven't sung out, you know, above metso forte at any point. I, I think that as these melodies go, we are singing in a, in an expressive way. I wouldn't hold the dynamics back too much, but forte, dynamics back too much in the melodies. In the accompaniment, yes, restrain them, but in the melodies, let, let people sing out. But then this is the first time the composer really marks this. Well, we need to make sure that structurally, this is kind of a high point. We've got this big moment of arrival. And then the tempo is going to slow down and we want to make sure we have this contrast then with the pianos. Okay. So by really heading up here and then a, a fast enough diminuendo that this piano is going to come through clearly. Because if we play loudly, but then don't diminuendo quick enough, well, we might lose this entrance here of this little motif. Okay, so just something to, you know, when you're going through your score, you go, okay, I, I mark this thing like fast enough dim. It's just through experience, I know like, well, it's, this could happen if they don't diminuendo fast enough, this might get covered. It might be totally fine and I don't have to say anything or indicate anything. And that's great, but it's just a matter of when you're live in, in the situation, seeing what, what's going to happen, okay? And then in terms of actual, in this first section, again, for the conducting part of it, I, I think it generally, the, the challenge is to be able to structure in your gestures the way the music is structured. So that you're able to show that the first bar is leading through to the next bar, which is then leading through to the next bar. And make sure that the, you know, that your gesture is going to indicate to them that we're going through to the fourth part, fourth bar in a four-bar phrase, right? And so that you, through size, through, through speed, or just by having the left hand sustain things and to show that we're going to a point that's later than, you know, where they currently are, where the musicians currently are, to get them thinking in terms of a line and thinking in terms of a destination and not to be thinking note by note, just where we are right at this moment. Okay, so that, for, for the technical side, the conducting side, is, I think, kind of the main, you know, one of the main things you want to be thinking about. Each of these musical things that I've talked about, well, then I would think about a way to show it physically. So if I'm going to ask a player, for example, here to do a bit of a crescendo, do extra crescendo, I'm going to make sure I've got a ton of eye contact. I'm going to be encouraging that, now, we will probably have to talk about it, but I'm going to show as much as I can physically. And to show that we need to get all the way across the bar line to get over here and that we can resolve. Well, all of that, you just find a way to show the, the, where the resolution happens, to show the breath here if they're going to breathe, but to make sure that you phrase from here would mean that you're going to, you're going to breathe on that third. And then the fourth beat is going to lead us across the bar line. Now, in legato things, we want to be going horizontal, size, you know, all of these things, considering it's tempting to get too big too soon. You know, generally, the smaller we are, the clearer we are. And if we want things to move forward in tempo, for example, it can be tempting to move faster and bigger. But that actually, you know, can occupy more space, which gives players kind of more time to play, which actually, you know, can be counterproductive to trying to move forward. So it's something that I read how the ensemble is reacting. And if I'm trying to show energy and I'm giving more and I'm moving more, but it's actually not helping things move forward, well, then I'll make a mental note to actually move a little bit slower when there's less room between the beats. Musicians tend to, oh, I need to move forward because I don't have as much time and not as much space in between the beats. So then if I don't have the space, I still have to find a way to show the energy, okay, while staying small. And that can be done, you know, a variety of ways. It can be with eye contact, with your, with your breath, with your general body language. And, and through showing the line. Okay, I know it's, it's, it's weird to be speaking in an abstract sense about this, but with everyone here being conductors, I hope that's, that's helpful nonetheless. Okay, continuing on with the music side of things. This is another opportunity here for, we do now finally have some, you know, a little phrasing indication here. I would, I've marked in a little bit of a resolution, a little bit of a diminuendo, and to sing through the third here. It's, just makes it more beautiful. The, this is D flat and the barre is in B flat, so they're both D flats. Okay, so so the fact that we're going up a third, I would sing up, and let it resolve down to the E flat. I I didn't notice this when I was first studying it. Generally, when we've linked two notes with a slur, we wouldn't be connecting, right? We, we teach our students to, to kind of lift after the end of a slur. I, I don't find that particularly musical here. To, to break between the fa and the mi, I, I don't really see that as being a good idea. Again, technically, it'd be what's written. I don't know why he didn't just phrase it like this across. But that's how I would do it is and then we have the so this kind of thing going back and forth between the two groups, right? Passing it between to make sure that there's a connection made there. And then with the three notes in a row, generally with three notes, we don't want to play them all the same. Our options are, we can do a crescendo through, we can do a diminuendo across, or we can do a hairpin towards the middle. Okay, and this is a matter of choice, what you think makes the most sense musically. One of the recordings I listened to today, I, when I analyzed it, I felt, I, I sing each one, honestly. I don't know right when I look at it, which one is going to be, but I am looking for a way to make it expressive. And so I would kind of sing a little bit towards the middle and, and resolve. That's how I would do it. One of the recordings I listened to today did a crescendo to the downbeat, which is, you know, another option. But I just find with to me, the, the swell in the middle made the most sense, but it's not, it wouldn't be wrong either way. And then when we get into, I just noticed the time. I don't want to run too far over here. Let me just see, we're already, okay, we got 10 minutes away. Good. In this section here, oh, yeah, misprint, there's these rallentandos. I don't know if that's in everybody's score, ral with like no notes, obviously a, a misprint there, I think. And I think it was meant to be part of this maybe, but I don't know. I would just cross that out. That happens in all sorts of music, misprints. So the printed word is not always final, kind of have to make sense of, of what's there. Now, when we get into this bit here with the clarinets, I would really encourage, we've got this unison here and then we've got the third. So how does this go here? We've got and then we've got the thirds going. Now, when you've got thirds, try to really have the lower note sing out a little bit to support the upper notes. Okay, so that, to have when we, it, it allows for more harmonics and it allows for better tuning and a little bit richer sound, okay? When on the piano, I learned to do the opposite. In order to get this to come out, I would, what note is this? So the do, I would play the, the third is less. the, the third is less. And so that I would have this nice, I don't know if you can hear this and they, and through Zoom, I have no idea if the dynamics are being leveled out or what. But anyway, I would bring out on the piano, the do more and the, and the A flat less. But it would be a little bit the opposite when we're dealing with an ensemble. We would want to make sure that the A flat is really supporting the sound and that the third is ringing nicely within the sound of that lower A flat. So that we've got a, a nice singing tone, rich tone through there. And then that brings us to this little conclusion. We've got this rallentando here. We resolve everything, another four, five, one cadence to finish our, our section here. So, you know, G flat, A flat, and then D flat. And we're back to the same material as the beginning. Now, when music repeats like this, there's a couple of ways to do it. You could do it the same exactly as you did the first time. Or it might be an opportunity to, you know, if you had slowed down more the first time, well, this might be an opportunity to, to keep going a little bit more and to, you know, to shed another light on the same material. Typically, I think we, you know, we gen, tend to do it more or less the same way. But I just wanted to say that it's not a must. You know, you could have a little bit more direction this, the second time through. Now, there's this kind of surprise chord change here. It goes into a flat six. So we're going in, we're in D flat major, and we end up with an A major chord. So this is kind of a surprising moment harmonically here, which is nice to bring out, which the composer does with these accents on the second beat. And crescendo through here, heading us, we're just getting more drive going through as we head into this faster section. Now, four notes in a row, five notes in a row, when they're stepwise motion like this, the thing I'm always looking for, the curve. Where's the shape? So rather than just doing stiffly. Where's the curve? So that it's got to swing through. And I would really feel it between the, the E flat and the F. Okay, we're still are aiming towards the top, but this can still be shaped. It doesn't mean just one dynamic and all notes equal. Which kind of helps to bring some momentum as well for this somewhat marcato, faster version of the theme. So the somewhat marcato, it's a bit more tongued. It is intentionally a bit more emphasized, a bit more note by note, which is okay if we've done a great job of making the other iterations of the theme more legato and longer line. Some really kind of interesting funky harmonies through here. I took the time to kind of go through and I was like, well, what are they actually? Because there's, there's some interesting clashes in here. Like we've got a an E flat chord. This, here at the start of this, we've actually, we're on a D flat, but it's an E flat chord. So it's the seventh that's on the bottom. And we've also got an F in here. Where is it here? Yeah. Where is the F? With the ninth, an E flat nine, seven chord. Anyway, when I looked at this earlier, it made sense. Let me just see if I can find it. We've got our G flat Bs. Actually, while I'm doing this, it's a great opportunity to talk about when I'm tuning something. The order I always go in is to find what is the root of the chord, not necessarily the bottom note, but what would be the, you know, in a D flat chord, to get all the D flats going and then to find the fifth and get the, the fifth tuned. So we've got the D flat tune and the fifth tuned and get that open fifth in tune now with everybody. And then you add the third into the middle afterwards. Once you've got the open fifth locked in, then find the third and, and just kind of place it in. Typically, the third can be played a little bit less, less loudly. If you, if you have a sustained chord, for example, at the end of a piece, which we will hear, and I could talk about it then, I suppose. But generally, the third is the color. And we can just have it be a little bit softer and it will, it will balance nicely into the, the root and the fifth that are within the chord. And that's something that we're doing all the time at the professional level as well. Because intonation is not an absolute. Different players will feel things higher or lower. And so one of the challenges in an orchestra rehearsal, also with different instruments have tendencies, as you know. But one of the things is to get everyone to agree on, you know, what, what pitch are we using, even at the professional level. So that's something that we definitely do spend time on. And actually, I had, I had coffee with Charles Dutois a few months ago. And Dutois was the conductor that really put the Montreal Symphony on the international map and did like 90 recordings with them. And so many of them are still reference recordings today, you know, 25, 30 years later. And really extraordinary musician. And something that he was known for was fixing intonation by fixing balance. And so I asked him about this. And he said, well, when players can hear themselves within the chord, then it's much easier to tune. And so by having, when I mentioned earlier, the third being a little bit less, that's something that if the third is blaring out there, everybody could be playing in tune, but it kind of throws the harmonics out of wong. And so out of whack. So I, just putting that out there as a, a thought that sometimes just by working on the balance of a chord and making sure that you have the right levels of the root and the fifth, and then just adding a bit of the third in, you can end up fixing the intonation without even having to, to raise or lower. Now, I know in the earlier levels, it's a lot of, you know, control and just getting people to, to be able to tune and to listen. So it may not apply, but, but I'm just putting that out there as a thought. And then, as we get into kind of the more dramatic aspect of this piece, this faster middle section, again, four notes in a row, five notes in a row, I'm always looking for the curve. And generally, the, the, the forces of the curve are towards the second note. And a thought here I marked to tag this here, we've got an accent, and then we have a long sustained note. Whenever you've got this accent, long sustained note, accent, long sustained note. Well, there's a lot of other things happening, like the melody while this is going on. And so the accent is a tag, and then I would come away and allow space, be softer in here to make sure that we can hear the, the melody and what's going on. For sure, an accent does not mean, you know, attack and then keep playing loud all the way through. It means that the front of the note is attacked, and then we can come away and leave space here for the, the other instruments to be heard. Okay. A little moment for the percussion. They're not too busy in this piece, but this is one moment where they kind of help drive things across the bar line a little bit. Okay. And to broaden greatly this nice kind of opening thing. Now, the, the composer writes in a forte, metsoforte here, kind of a, he does a little bit of what I was encouraging earlier, come away in order to leave more room for the crescendo. But in this case, it's a particular effect, go towards the downbeat and then come away. It's fairly obvious. I don't need to go into that. This is the same material as what we've already seen. Coming into the end here. Great rallentando. Well, one of the dangers in rallentandos is slowing down too soon and ending up with kind of no momentum left in order to naturally get to the end of the bar. So again, it says great rallentando. Well, yes, that means we're gonna slow down a lot, but I wouldn't slow down too much in the first two beats. I would start to subdivide when I'm conducting this. I would right away start to show the subdivision so that then we've got more room to start calculating. Everybody can feel, they know that it's in the subdivided. The way I mark that is with these. Right? So I just, and when I mark this into a score, that's a visual thing for me. I know I'm gonna be subdividing here. But I would definitely do most of the writ in the latter part of the bar. And one thing that is very beautiful here is this rising. What is this here? Rising seventh. While these instruments are kind of going a little bit more stepwise through here, we have the clarinets singing this nice big jump there. And so making sure that they can, that that nice little touch is heard. Okay. And this gentle roll in the timpani, the timpani could do a bit of a swell. Here just to just something that gives us just a little brief moment of, of expression, something for them to, kind of a touch of color there. And as I mentioned, on these moments of stasis, a final chord, a great place to really make sure that, that each degree of the, the chord is individually tuned, but then to lock in the root and the fifth. Let me just see, is there even the fifth in this one? With these. These are E flats. So yeah, there is the fifth here. Okay. So it, it looks like it's actually fairly naturally balanced with the number of D flats versus A flats in there. But that would be something to just kind of work on a little bit. And it's a way to get a really nice soft sound that rings and that is open. And I, okay, I wrote one last thing here, feel subdivision of sixteenths. Now, if we want to increase the likelihood of being really together, it can help to feel this as, instead of just eighth notes. You can go, you can have the players practice this as repeating each one. Because by doubling it up, you can feel a more gradual progression of the rallentando. And then when they go back to playing it the way it's written, but still imagining that there's the repeated note in there, the repeated sixteenths, then they will feel more naturally together how the music slows down. So. And that's a little, a little trick, adding a little extra subdivision in there. And I do use that at the professional level as well, just saying feel the inner subdivision. And that way, everybody can kind of feel the music together as we slow down. So that's it. I hope that that is helpful for you. If anybody has any questions, I know we're a little bit past the hour. I don't want to hold anybody up who needs to go. But if anyone has any questions or anything, I'm certainly happy to, to stick around and answer any, or if there's anything I missed, you know, don't hesitate, let me know. And I can try to help out.
Um, I saw Mark, Mark had a question about the timpani roll at 23 and 24. So if, wanna scan back there. And while you do that, I will just thank our sponsors, Cadme, and Save the Music Foundation with, for their support of, of Adam and this project, getting him the scores and, and, and providing us the, the ability to, to, to produce these segments with you. So a big thank you to Academy and to Save the Music for, for their support of this. And thank you guys for coming and being here tonight. Look forward to the next time we get to do this. And once again, thanks to Adam for taking the time to, to analyze the score and go through it with, with his orchestra eyes and, and his band background as well. And it's just, it's really nice to hear such wonderful thoughts on, on such great music. So thank you very much to Adam and thank you to everyone else. And Adam, if you want to talk to, to Mark's question, then feel free. Otherwise, thanks for being here, everyone, and we'll see you next time.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. And like I said, please feel free to go if you need to. Now. The question, I don't have the chat up, so I didn't see.